Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the BOHS number six board meeting to order for November 20th at 7:00 PM. And we'll start as always with the clerk's report and approval of the minutes from our November 6th meeting. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Okay. Is that a seconded? Is it seconded?
Whoever.
Inter- interrupt. Is there any additions, deletions, corrections, changes that we need to make?
I'd like to point out to our scheme clerk that my name is spelled with an E.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor of approving the minutes as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or extensions? Does anyone have any communications to come before the board today? See none?
Sounds like one.
We'll move to recognition of groups, individual visitors, and just the usual suspects here tonight, so we can move on to consent agenda. Is there a motion to enter consent agenda?
Some move.
Move seconded?
I'll second that.
Move seconded by rest? Alright. And let's start with finance, building, and transportation.
Okay. Finance, building, and transportation has been very active over the last two or three weeks, mostly in the finance area. We met on November 7th, at which time we reviewed the capital plan as it relates to the budget. And there were no warrants or payrolls at any of these three meetings I might mention. But we met again on the 14th, which was last Tuesday. I'm sorry, last, yeah, last Tuesday. We're kind of in a Tuesday pattern now. At which time we did our first review of the BAMS and WRCC budget. And it will be, all of these will be tweaked a little bit before they get to their final version for sure, but we had a first look at them and they have seemed to be pretty good from a expense control perspective. And our next meeting will be tomorrow at 8:00 AM, at which time we will review the district-wide and senior high budget. One other item I didn't mention on the 7th that we took up was the snowplow budget. And we agreed to extend that for one more year. So Luzney has had that, I think, for three years now. And we wanted to do a one-year extension. The services integrated, everything is good and fair, so we extended it one year. And that's about it with finance.
WSCSU Finance Committee?
We met last week on Wednesday and went over the, sort of, the central office budget and the meals, the food service. And not huge changes on any of those. We went through some of the details there. But we're not meeting this coming Wednesday, thankfully, unintended. And, but we'll be in the following Wednesday where I believe we'll get the draft budget. I mean, Frank hadn't gotten yet from Imperial all of the, sort of, the per capita figures and those sorts of things. But we hope to have the draft budget on the 20, non-technical, I guess, is the date. So you're all welcome to come, but anyways.
The equalized pupil number.
And by the way, I should, I should say, I don't know if he's here to vet that the finance, Bradwell Finance Committee has been coming to our meetings, which is really helpful, and has been asking questions.
As they have. Franz Reisberg has been at least one or two Finance Committee. One of the big numbers that we're going to be waiting for is to equalize, first, plus equalize pupils. What the state is supposed to have to us by
December 1st.
September 1st, but it doesn't usually happen like that.
No.
That's a big one to know.
And we're shooting for, I think, voting on the budget December 6th, is that right? Budget approved by school board, I see as being December 6th, which is coming up quickly. So for the, so that'll be an SU-wide meeting.
December 6th.
So the three of us, the voting members here, will be there and looking at that. So we will try to, I mean, all, the individual draft budgets are around, but we will try to pass around a budget in advance. That's one of the things that the Finance Committee is trying to do, so that you get a more of a chance to look it over before the meeting on the 6th. And by the way, in the past, I have talked about roles and responsibilities for the SU Finance Committee, which we're thinking to bring up at that meeting, but there's too much going on there, so we'll wait till the next meeting to look at that. Though I know Ruth enjoys long meetings, so if you want to push us to, no problem. So that meeting will be the, will be the big budget.
And do we have a time and place for the December 6th meeting yet?
I believe it's going to be in Academy School.
Academy?
Because it's backed up to Brownville Town.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll see if I've got it.
Like 6:00?
6:30, I think. It's 4:30 to 6:30 is Bradwell Town, and 6:30 is WSCSU.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay.
Great. Planning and policy?
Has not met.
Teacher curriculum committee?
Has not met.
BAMS committee?
Has not met.
WRCC committee?
Has not met.
Yes, we did.
That was before the last meeting?
Oh, it was before this?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's, we should not have WSCSU Act 46 Study Committee still on this list under consent agenda, so well, that has not met, but we'll skip that. But under unfinished business, Lyle's going to give us an update as to where the town school boards are in their process with what's next and everything that she knows about that. So we'll get that during unfinished business. Alright, is there anything else for consent agenda for this evening? Yes, Sean?
Since I came in late, could I go back to the clerk's report?
Yes.
Sorry about that. On, I, I was not at the last meeting and I was listed as absent. I was at the Guilford School informational meeting on Act 46 because it was November 6th.
Right.
The day before the vote. And then I happened to notice in the minutes that it noted my absence, but then it also said that I made a motion. That's a pretty good trick.
You're more talented than you thought, Sean. Alright.
We changed, you know, we added a kind of a different category for circumstances like that, right? Doing other business excused or whatever.
Right. So we'll just do a, does anybody remember who made the motion to approve consent agenda at our last meeting? Probably not, but that's where it says that Sean made the motion, so we will make a friendly amendment to fix that, since we've already approved the minutes. If everyone's okay with that.
Thank you.
And then as far as your absence or attendance goes, I know I've been, I got, Barb and I have been emailing today in relation to making sure that if somebody from this board, for instance, using Sean as an example of the last meeting, he was at a school board-related meeting, but he missed this meeting, the absence won't come against him in the, in our annual meeting report. It'll be listed slightly differently in there, but, you know, but you're on a school board-related meeting, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ricky, one other thing. You're talking about the per pupil cost. There's a thing on, I'm reading a thing to, you know.
Right now?
Yeah. Something the legislature's nonpartisan joint fiscal office has esti-, I saw it earlier on the news. Has estimated tax rates could rise nine to 10 percent, nine to 10 cents in the fiscal year. The Scott administration generally agrees. Resident homeowners would see a jump from $1.50 per 100, for 100 home value to nearly $1.60. So roughly, they're thinking maybe 10 cents. I don't know if that's anything to do with the, the per student rate or, you know, a fiscal deficit, but it goes on. We'll hear more about it, I'm sure.
I'm sure, yeah. Alright, is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
Some move.
Alright, moved and seconded?
Well, you can second it, too.
I'll second. Alright, move and seconded by rest. Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or extensions? None? Alright, those two administrative reports. Let's start at the far end with, with BAMS. Hi, everyone. Let's see. So we're celebrating a little school vacation this, this week, and leading into that, a few nice things happened. Team Taurus, which is one of four teams, every year they do what they call Torkey Day. Taurus and Turkey Day combined, and it's a nice event for the students. They set up in the multipurpose room and they create a tea with a table for their turkey or Tor-, Taurus or whatever it is. And, and they prepare a large meal and the cafe services help provide the turkey and then they make cupcakes and everything. It's a nice little event for that team. And every team has some of their unique little things that they do, so that was a nice one. Our staff, every year we put together our counselors. Tracy and Paula help organize turkey giveaway, so we donate. The staff bring in box, they bring in, fill boxes for family, six families to have a Thanksgiving meal. So people bring in frozen turkeys and stuffing and all that, potatoes, and we fill them up and then the counselors deliver them. And they did that and then they combine it with Riverview Church, so they ended up doing 12 baskets this year, which is a really nice event. And they identify families that we have, students in need, and it's really nice. I heard some of the names and I was really, it's really nice to provide something for them. Just after our last meeting, we had conferences. We revised, we had a couple of half-days and we revised our format this year. Student-led conferences being in the eighth grade. The seventh grade in the fall, we decided we wanted a more of a teacher-led version. Both seemed to go well in the spring. And it'll be the first time at BAMS we've done two conferences during the year, at least in recent memory, from what I understand. So those will both be student-led. Personalized learning plans, PLPs, will be at the center of those presentations. And we had a good turnout. Staff worked really hard to get as many families as possible. Both team, all four teams had more than 75% of the families sign up and almost everybody showed up. And we're trying to follow up the families that didn't, weren't able to make it to, to do those conferences. So overall, it was, it was really well done. I had a survey that Paul Smith helped me with and I haven't received the results yet, but everything I'd seen and heard, people seemed to really like it. We had, we want to try to find ways to celebrate students' success a little more. Recognize students for their achievements. Each team has like what they call a team-town meeting, whether it's weekly or bi-weekly. They generally have that, something in the mornings during advisory where they celebrate as a team, student achievements and those kind of things. But our honor roll assembly, our honor roll recognition has been for the last few years, since I got here, an after-school event with ice cream and a drawing of locally donated goods. And it seemed to be dwindling, kids seem to have a lot of conflict with making it, whether it's because of after-school sports or beams or whatever, maybe not beams, but students weren't attending as, as much as we would like. And they weren't receiving any certificates. We've always done names in the paper, but I, we decided to spruce it up this year and have an assembly. And so we had those assemblies last week and I think it, I, well, I was the one kind of promoting it the most, but I, I thought it was successful and hopefully something we can build upon. And we were able to print really nice honor roll certificates. The students brought home, it had their, their school picture on it, it was in color, and, and they came out really good. And the honor roll, actually, if you looked at Thursday's paper, the 16th, pretty much the full page is dedicated to Bradwell Schools except for one article. We got an article focused on our techno-, tech ed program. Daisy Frederick brought in Stevens and Associates. And, and they worked on, we'll see. Yeah, connecting with the eighth grade students participating in technology and design exploration, exploratory program. And you can look at that article there from the 16th. And then the bottom part is high school and middle school honor rolls, so that was kind of nice. Last but not least, after the break, our intensive services specialized program. Every, for the last few years, Junie Pereira and Caroline Belcher have been organizing with a local circus yoga, yoga person named Erin O'Keefe. And she comes in and works with that, with that population of students for two weeks, doing a lot of sensory stuff, but juggling. And at the end of the two weeks, they put together a presentation for their families and staff and other students that come down. It's nice, these are students that really, really benefit from that kind of work. So it's, it's always a fun time to watch the, the show at the end. That's all I have. Any questions? Alright, could not be thanks given.
Thank you.
Alright, let's move to the high school.
Sure. Thank you. So a quick hiring note. John Curse, one of our English teachers, is taking next semester off as paternity leave. And instead, we have hired Denise Freysberg as a long-term substitute. Denise has taught in Chicopee. She's currently working at Academy School, but she's going to come join us for the second semester, so we're going to welcome Denise here. We're excited to have her expertise. Last week, we had our BOHS concert and it was a great show, fantastic show. And I do want to note that it was our choral teacher's first concert, Elise Lawsworth, and she did a phenomenal job. One of the touches I really liked is in the hallway afterwards, she had actually put up a congratulations to the, to the students and thanked them for their show. It was kind of a nice touch to, the kids came in the next day and they saw that. So I thought that was kind of a nice little thing to kind of build some, some investment in the program. We've been very busy with in-service today and tomorrow. This morning, we were very lucky to have Kate Hudson, who's a special educator with us, spend the morning, part of the morning, working with groups of staff members on how do you plan for students in a multi-tiered system of support. And she spent a lot of time talking about how we as educators need to be ready to kind of accommodate different learners at different times. And she used the analogy of cognitive layering, which kind of means that you present one option to one student who may be able to take it and run with it. That's what we call a tier-one student general instruction. You may have another student who, for whatever reason, has trouble accessing that material and they may need to have what are called cognitive layers put on. So they may need to have some additional scaffolding. And she talked about strategies that teachers can use to kind of build that scaffolding in. And so it becomes a regular part of classroom practice, not something when that student comes in that the teacher has to say, "Oh, I have to do something for that student." Instead, it's really a recognition that all students have different learning styles and all students need various levels of support. And that can vary from unit to unit within a course. And Kate's very articulate, very eloquent, and I just want to recognize her hard work. That was one of her 1% projects and she presented it today. It was, it was great. Also, today, we continued working on our five-year NEAS report. And some of the committees are done. And we've spent a lot of time talking about where we are in terms of community resources for learning. It's a challenge because five years ago proficiency was just a gleam in our eye and now we're deep in the middle of it. So now it's kind of a change in perspective, to kind of look at what NEAS was asking of, of us five years ago and where we are now, because we've certainly come a long way from their original goals. So that's going to continue to be a conversation. But the highlight of the day was this afternoon. TCC will remember that Ben Lord brought his YATS class, or as they like to call it, no, YATST. I don't know why. That's the Youth and Adults Transforming Schools Together class. And they, the students ran a two-hour in-service with all, with the entire faculty. And they did the same wagon wheel activity that I think members of TCC will remember, kind of break the ice and learn about rigor and relevance and how it applies to learning. But then they took us through the student survey and the teacher survey that went out a few weeks ago. They got about a 78% return rate from students and they had almost 100% from the staff. And they divided things up into things where answers were congruent. What are our strengths, congruent strengths? What are our congruent weaknesses? And then one, they had things that were called puzzling, puzzling answers. And so they kind of looked at areas where the student responses diverge wildly from the teacher responses. And we spent some time going around with the students, facilitating the whole process, kind of looking at those, giving feedback, and then talking about next steps for the, for the YATS group and what we thought as faculty were priorities. One of the themes that came out of that was that it was great that they got our input on the survey, but we also think that they should devise a way to run the same in-service they did for us with groups of students, to kind of talk about where there's divergence and where we can move ahead as a group. I, I can't say enough, they were, they were personable, they were thorough. They kept the trains running on time, if not early. And so that group did a phenomenal job. The whole class was great and I'd also like to also recognize the work that Ben Lord has done with that class. So. Finally, tomorrow, we'll be doing department work. We'll spend some time as faculty talking about a debrief from the parent forum for proficiency we had a few weeks ago, to kind of talk about some of the feedback we got there. And then the balance of the day will be for departments to continue their work with proficiency-based learning and moving that process ahead. And then last, but certainly not least, Feed the Thousands is kickoff is next Tuesday, Student Council. And I did talk to Student Council, they will begin at the next board meeting to have a regular presence here. So they are excited about Feed the Thousands and they're ready to kind of help our community with this great event. Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? The, and Lyle, this is, this probably goes to you because this goes back a while. The cognitive layering, then, how does that relate to what I used to be called like 15 years ago, differentiated instruction or differentiated learning? I mean, is it, is it just the same thing, but just developed in new techniques?
It's the same, it's the same idea. The difference with the cognitive layering, as it was presented with Kate today, was that you're developing a toolbox. And with students, you need to kind of balance the idea of keeping things fresh and engaging and relevant with the security that I kind of know what interventions will come along. So differentiation is not necessarily that expectation, but the way we talked about it today is that if a student is struggling in a certain way with a project and they, but let's say, you know, instead of doing the reading that the rest of the class is doing, they're doing an alternative reading, but also supplementing that with some video. You know, kind of to make up for their, you know, for whatever reading gap they have.
So is it, is it more sort of a, like a new techniques to implement what we hope?
It's, well, so it's kind of a way to address gaps in students' skill set. Whereas differentiation is addressing different ways that students access material. There's a lot of overlap in certain, so.
But I would say that the tier-one that everybody's getting is definitely differentiated. As Steve just pointed out, there will be some students that can go in and read the book, some students that might have to have an alternative reading and watch some video, but they're still getting the same information, that basic information. Then there will be a group of students that have not been able to get this information. They need it either presented in a more differentiated, even more, more targeted to their learning need. So that would be considered a tier-two, so it's even further, a further level of differentiation. All teachers should be differentiating that tier, tier-one. But quite often, special educators are the ones that have the background to know really how to target what students need for tiers two and three.
So are the general staff being sort of trained to do that on their own, or?
They are. You know, we don't have the capacity to, to have a special educator go into every classroom with every teacher all the time. So part of the idea here is that teachers can become the agents of their own modification. So there's two things you can do with students. You can accommodate their needs, whether it's a 504, an IEP, or EST plan. Or you can modify, meaning that you do a bigger reconstruction of the assignment and the goals that you're asking. And really, at this point, we don't have the capacity to have special educators do all the modification, so.
I can sort of feel that proficiency-based learning would key into that whole concept pretty, pretty well. I mean, it's, it's really what it's all about, isn't it?
Correct.
I mean, that's the core of proficiency-based learning. You, you get it in different ways at your own time.
And flexible pathways also feeds into that. Students might choose to figure out how they want to learn the information on their own and then work with teachers to access their material in the way that they can best understand it.
I have a question.
Sure.
In reading through, looking at the honor roll lists, I must admit, I did not read through them all. It seems like there are a lot more students on the honor roll than there have been in the past. What percentage of our students have honor roll?
I don't know it offhand. I couldn't tell you right now. I would have to kind of do a count. You know, honor, there's honor roll and there's high honors.
Yeah.
And so, you know, honor roll are students that have a 85 or better, high honors is a 85.
It's, it seems like there are really a lot of high honors students. One must be raising really brilliant kids.
I think in some cases we are. I wouldn't, I wouldn't discount how hard our kids work.
Qualifications have not changed, have they?
Right, right.
Eighty, eighty per?
Eighty and then eighty, then eighty, eighty-five and ninety.
Oh, eighty-five per?
I believe it's eighty-five.
And if it's changed, it's changed even higher, so we're getting more people, that's really good.
One of the challenges we have to think about for next year is, what's that, what does honor roll look like in an efficiency-based model? Stay tuned.
Does, may I have a report for you? Might give anything?
Uh, you can go.
Okay. Central office?
Sure. So there's only one thing I want to point out to you. I want to spend a little more time on the Act 46 discussion. You should have all gotten a letter from Governor Scott forwarded to you from probably Nicole Mace of BSBA. But just a couple of things I wanted to point out, that Governor Scott is looking forward to working with educational leaders. He's having an education summit sometime in December. He talks about 631. If you've heard him talk before, you know he's talking about six fewer workers in our workforce, three fewer kids in our K-12 schools, and nearly one baby born exposed to opiates every single day. So it's interesting to sit back and think about that and think about what our education system is going to have to look like in a few years. But a couple of other things that I wanted to point out, concepts that he is considering. Examination of the timing of the budget vote. You might remember last year, it was pretty much after budgets had been developed and town meetings had been set, town reports printed, and the governor had asked to push back the vote on school budgets. So pretty much everyone was up in arms about that because we work hard this time of year to get the budget ready and get it ready for town, for town meeting. But that's one of the things that he's talking about now, about changing the timing of budget votes. Other things in this article, capital incentives for consolidating schools, state and local incentives to help manage staff attrition. That was described to me as a statewide plan for teachers who want to retire and sort of a retirement incentive for that. Statewide policies for a sustainable plan for staffing costs. I do not know what that might be. Hopefully, we'll hear about it in December. And pilot proposals to reduce regulations and promote innovation. So those are a few of the points that were in that letter. If you haven't had a chance to read it, it's a little bit long, but it's certainly well worth it. And hopefully, some of us will be able to attend the December summit.
Was that a letter by email, a hard copy, or?
I got it through the VSA, but I'm pretty- I got it through the VSA, but I'm pretty sure that the VSA, Nicole Mace, sent it out to all the board members. I can forward this to Ricky or give it to Barb, and she can forward it out to you.
I got it, but I didn't pay any attention to what entity sent it out.
Governor Scott, but the SBA.
All right. Thank you, everybody. So let's move to unfinished business and get an update on Act 46 and where things are at related to that.
Sure. So as all of you know by now, the merger vote did not pass in any school district. I'm just going to go through the timeline of what's required of all, not your board, but all of the town district boards. Within 30 days, if there is a call for reconsideration, that has to happen. I have not heard that there will be, so I think that we can cross that off our list. Each of the town school boards must go through three steps now. Self-evaluate the district's ability to meet the educational or fiscal goals of Act 46. Have conversations with other districts, and it could be other districts within our supervisory union or outside of our supervisory union. And then submit a proposal to the Secretary of Education and the State Board of Ed that outlines the analysis of how their board will meet the goals of Act 46. I want to note that not only does each school board, each school board is required to do, but citizens groups can also submit a plan to the Secretary of Education and the Board of Ed. So these... They're called Section 9. They can talk about retaining their same governance structure, how they might work with other districts to form a different governance structure, or enter into another model that we haven't considered as of yet. So by December 26, those plans must be at the Agency of Ed.
December 26?
December 26, yes. Yes. The agency will give feedback and ask questions of any group that has submitted a plan. The secretary will review those plans. Boards or groups that have submitted plans have a chance to supplement, add, so that you're submitting your plan on the 26th, but it doesn't mean it's finished. There is a chance to supplement or give additional information. And that goes through May 31st, so December 26 through May 31st. On June 1st, 2018, where we are right now, obviously, the secretary issues proposed statewide plan that may or may not incorporate any of those Section 9 proposals. Through November 29, the State Board of Ed reviews the proposals, takes testimony about them, and boards can again supplement or amend. And then November 30, the State Board of Ed issues a statewide plan that could or does not have to incorporate any of the proposals that we've just been talking about. So that's sort of the outline. So the next date that we'll be looking at is the December 26 date, at which time all school boards will have submitted something. Each board is doing something a little bit different. I think Annie can talk about what Putney's doing. Demerston's having a hearing at their, before their next board meeting of townspeople. Guilford is actually meeting tonight. Frank is there. Frank Rucker, Mike Heber's there with the Guilford board, discussing some of the options that they're thinking. Broadville Town is discussing it next Wednesday, the 29th, looking at what the Alternative Structures Group, Governance Group, has proposed and seeing how they might fit in with that. You want to talk about Putney? We met last week.
You'll be good. Putney's planning on surveying our town and sending their responses. At the moment, our general plan is the Articles of Agreement, just going along with them. But a couple of us have been attending the AGS meetings as well.
And that's a possibility. You, a board, could submit to the Articles of Agreement, saying that they want to use that as their plan. They could submit the Articles of Agreement with some changes to some of the articles. They can look at the alternative governance structure that's being proposed by the Alternative Governance Structure Group and see if there are things there that they would like to replace in the Articles of Agreement or take on that whole plan. So at this point, it's wide open, whatever each board decides they would like to do.
Well, the Alternative Structure Group, that's a multi-town group, is it?
Yes.
Okay. So these... Anybody that wants to make a proposal doesn't have to be making it on the behalf of just one district?
Correct.
Okay. I had another question, and now I've lost it. And they have, but they have to follow the same three steps of self-evaluation, conversation with other districts, and submit a proposal accordingly. Could there be a proposal as partial, with a district in conjunction with?
The Alternatives.
Alternatives?
Yes. I suspect that's what Demerston will...
Yeah. Sure. Well, I was wondering if there are drafts out there of the Alternative Governance Structure Group?
I have not seen one yet.
Because, you know, just as a comparison, the Act 46 Study Committee, every time they met, almost, it was a new draft. So, I mean, we're talking a year and a half of drafts. So I guess I'm really confused how it could all happen if there isn't something that people could look at at this point that would be, you know, hard copy. How would it occur?
And Annie might be able to answer that better, because she's been attending those meetings.
Yeah. Part of the proposal is completed, but there are large sections that are completely not there yet, so that's why they haven't really distributed to the public. It will go back to all the boards, even if the people from Guilford, who are not from your board, just come. It will be sent out by the AGS committee to all of the boards, and I guess it will be up to the boards how to disseminate it from there. But there's not been a draft, because only part of it, like, is completed at all. Like, not, "We're going to tweak this and change this," but this entire section, not completed. They're using a lot of the information that was gathered by the Act 46 Committee, and they're using things that have been proposed from other school districts in other parts of the state to put it together. So that's why it's not going to take as long, because other people have already done a lot of the work.
So the... When it goes to the AOE on the 26th, would it have the format that the Articles of Agreement has? I mean, would it be that comprehensive?
I have not seen the plan at all. Hopefully, on the 29th, the Alternative Group is going to have a plan ready to share with the Broadville Town School District, and I'll see it then, but I have not seen, I've not been sent a plan.
And what meeting is that, on the 29th?
That's the Broadville Town School District called a special meeting, so that they could actually see the alternative plan.
So that'll be a one meeting on the 29th?
Yes, yes, yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that, Lyle. Any other questions? For you and Lyle from that?
Well, I just thought it was interesting to look at the numbers of the vote, and it was 70% of the voting public, basically 70, 30, 70% said, "No, we don't want unification." So it's kind of overwhelming in terms of the... I mean, that's not a very, a very even vote by any means. So, I don't know. I found it kind of disheartening. I don't know where the, where the organization came for the no votes. All the lawn signs, they were everywhere. They were professionally done. There must have been some money behind it, but there was no organization. What it said was info@46.org or .com. I looked that up, but it really didn't have a cohesive group of names or people. So it was confusing to me, because the week before the vote, a week before the seventh vote, then all of these signs, "Vote no, vote no, vote no." Who paid for it? Who put them up? Who went around and took them down? It was just like, it was a mystery.
I believe they called themselves Local Voices for Local Schools. And one thing that they did send out had a lot of, they signed their names to it.
Oh, really?
Yeah. We and Putney got very long mailer, but I think I saw their names. And one of the letters to the editor in one of the many online publications I've been reading, The Digger, The Commons, The Former, I'm not sure where I read it, but a whole lot of people have signed their names.
Oh, I saw that. It was 38 signatures, I think, on that letter.
Yeah. I believe the organization is fairly loose. And the summer was...
Somehow, I mean, those lawn signs would be expensive to produce, and somebody's got to go around and push them in the ground.
I don't know who paid...
Surprised me.
I don't know who paid for the signs. I do know that pushing them into the ground, they weren't always careful about where they were pushing them into the ground. A local property owner in Putney took them down twice off of his property.
Well, most of the ones in Guilford were not on public, I mean, were not on private property. They were just like on the road driveway, on Heinsberg Road. There were five of them on Heinsberg Road. They showed up on the, you know, one week before the vote.
Yep. All right. Any... So is there anything else for unfinished business? Anything under new business?
Well, I did have one more question.
Yeah.
There were some people that were elected to the Unified Board, Anne, and I guess it was Alice, for the four-year, and myself for the two-year, but I assume that will mean nothing.
Correct.
Right. Yeah, because the vote didn't pass, it's almost as if those elections didn't take place.
Yeah. So it was getting the petitions and everything was... That was another, if I may make another comment. I think the dearth of people that actually put their names out there, you know, if I was, unbeknownst to me, if I was going to go vote and I had a ballot and there were only, like in Guilford, there were three names on the ballot. It was Anne, Alice, and myself. I would think, well, if it's Unified Board, if nobody ran for the Unified Board, how serious can it be? So I think it was a major disappointment. I really do. I think it was, you know, it was a failure in a whole litany of failures around Act 46 and this WSESU. I found it frustrating. So thank you for listening to us.
All right. Okay. So no other unfinished business, no other, no new business?
Thank you. Just to end at a little bit more of a positive note, is, I mean, Act 46 with Montpelier's done has changed the tenor of some of the local, local interaction. But my own belief is that once we get through it, and it's based on, I mean, you have years of experience, many of us have years of experience, so once we get through it, I think that we'll all pull together again and remember instead of, you know, all the differences, come back to what the commonality is, which is teaching our kids. And part of it is the definition of who ours is. Is it our towns? Is it their towns? Is it the full SU? But I think whatever the governance ends up being, and it's not going to satisfy everybody. There'll be, people will be upset however it's done. If we can get past that upsetness and sort of accept it, then I think we can get back to the business of, you know, doing what we've been doing really successfully, which is educating our kids and doing a really good job and trying to keep costs down and doing that, and we'll pull together again. So I'll be glad when it's over and we can move on.
I appreciate your positive voice.
Thanks.
All right. So at this point, before we go into executive session, just as we see the motion to go into executive session, then we'll adjourn to the conference room. This is the board. Lyle and Steve, you're excused, Keith's excused, and then we will just come out of executive session long enough to... There's not going to be any action taken, it's just an information piece, then we'll come out and we'll just adjourn from there.
So it's for a personal matter?
For a personal matter, yeah. Okay. So is there a motion to enter?
We'll be going to executive session for a personal matter.
So moved?
Seconded.
Seconded? All in favor? All right. So let's adjourn to the conference room and... Thank you all.